Try that again.
You're on.
They can hear you. Again? Okay, well, we'll keep going.
Yeah.
They, again, the April eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting of Monroe County. Let's say it will now come to an end. Will the clerk please call the board?
This is Barnhart. Ms. Barnhart is present, Ms. Bartholomew McCoy. Ms. Bartholomew McCoy is present, Mr. Baines. Mr. Baines is present, Mr. Blankley. Mr. Blankley is present, Ms. Bonick. Ms. Bonick is present, Mr. Brew. Mr. Brew is present, Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess is present, Mr. Chardy. Mr. Chardy is present, Mr. Colby. Mr. Colby is present, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz is present, Ms. Delvaki Hoffman. Ms. Delvaki Hoffman is present, Mrs. DeFlorio. Mrs. DeFlorio is present, Mr. Dondorfer. Mr. Dondorfer is present, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Frazier is present, Ms. Hasman. Ms. Hasman is present, Ms. Hugh Smith. Ms. Hugh Smith is present, Mr. Johns. Mr. Johns is present, Mr. Keller. Mr. Keller is present, Mr. Long. Mr. Long is present, Mr. Mafucci. Mr. Mafucci is present, Mr. McCabe. Mr. McCabe is present, Ms. McIntyre. Ms. McIntyre is present, Mr. Milne. Mr. Milne is present, Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris is present, President Roman. President Roman is present, Mr. Sinclair. Mr. Sinclair is present, Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith is present, Ms. Vasquez Simmons. Ms. Vasquez Simmons is present, Mr. Udelson. Mr. Udelson is present.
Please stay seated. I'd like to introduce Father Louis Siriani of Saint Mark's Roman Catholic Church, who has been invited by legislators Sinclair. Lead us in a moment of prayer.
Let us pray. Almighty, our living God, in whose hand lies every human heart and the rights of peoples, look with favor, we pray, on those who govern with authority over us, that throughout the whole world, the prosperity of peoples, the assurance of peace and freedom of religion may through your gift be made secure. We ask this, and trust you will grant it to us, Lord God. Amen. And the pleasure to leave now.
Ah, there. And before you leave, I'd like to present with the certificate of appreciation.
Oh, thank you very much. Thanks for having me.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Now please stand as legislator Morris will now lead us in the fight of allegiance. Thank you. At this time, I ask you all to stand standing. Without objection, we will take agenda item number forty-four out of regular agenda order. Agenda item forty-four is moved by legislator Udelson and second by legislator Brew, expressing regret the Monroe County Legislature on the recent passing of Shirley Anne White, mother of former Monroe County Legislature President and legislator Sabrina Lamar.
Expressing regret of the Monroe County Legislature on the recent passing of Shirley Anne White, mother of former Monroe County Legislature President and legislator Sabrina Lamar. Be it resolved that the Monroe County Legislature hereby expresses its heartfelt condolences and deepest sympathy at the recent passing of Shirley Anne White, a beloved mother, grandmother, sister, and friend whose life was a testament to strength, strength, service, and love. And whereas Shirley Anne White passed away on March seventh, twenty twenty-five, at the age of seventy-one. And whereas Shirley was born on October fourth, nineteen fifty-three, in Tuskegee, Alabama, to Arthur and Hattie Pace White. In nineteen fifty-eight, during the Great Migration, Shirley and her loved ones relocated to Rochester, New York, where she would build her life and leave an indelible mark on all her, on all who knew her. And whereas, a proud graduate of the Rochester City School District, Shirley completed her studies at James Monroe High School in nineteen seventy-one and went on to earn her associate degree in business administration from the Stratford School of Business. Shirley's career spanned a range of positions, from Rochester Savings Bank and H&R Block to the Rochester Leadership Academy and First Student, where she served with diligence, compassion, and a strong work ethic that inspired those around her. Regardless of her role, Shirley brought warmth and integrity to her work and was admired by colleagues and clients alike. And whereas Shirley's personality was vibrant, bold, and unforgettable. She enjoyed life to the fullest, whether playing a game of spades, dancing to her favorite songs, enjoying softball, or lovingly preparing meals for her family. Known for her expressive T-shirts and even more expressive spirit, Shirley never hesitated to share her truth, and those who spent time with her were better for it. And whereas Shirley was the heart of her family, she took immense pride in raising her children and being a guiding presence in the lives of her grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Her love, wisdom, and laughter were the foundation of countless cherished memories that will live on for generations to come. And whereas Shirley was predeceased by her loving parents, Arthur and Hattie White, her brothers George and Clifford White, and her sister Doris Branch, she is survived by her devoted children, Sean and Roberta Lamar and Sabrina Lamar, her adored grandchildren, Tajmir Lamar, India Mealing, and Jana Lester, her precious great-grandchildren, Nassim, Nadia, Eason, Savari, and Symphony, and her dear sisters Audrey White, Sandra Souls, and Evelyn and Rita White, and a wide circle of nieces, nephews, cousins, and cherished friends who will continue to carry her memory forward. And whereas Shirley Anne White will be remembered as a strong, loving, and spirited woman who uplifted everyone around her. Her presence will be deeply missed, but her spirit will remain, will forever remain in all she knew. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the legislature is hereby requested to forward a copy of this resolution to the bereaved family. This resolution was adopted unanimously, with each legislator rising in his or her place for a moment of silence.
Your copy of date three, March eleventh, is available through Nova's agenda. Without exception, these journals now stand approved. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to make the following announcement. Today, the Democratic Majority Caucus introduced a memorizing referral to reaffirm unwavering commitment to the oath we took in this chamber to support and uphold fundamental constitutional rights, including the right to due process, equal protection under the law, and free speech. I invite all legislators to stand in solidarity as we call upon all citizen officials to join us in upholding constitutional principles, ensuring that Monroe County remains a beacon of justice and equality for all residents. Thank you. We now move on to the presentation of petitions and communications. Legislators, referrals submitted to the legislature for the next committee cycle are available on Nova's agenda as well as online. There are several proclamations scheduled this evening. Mr. Clerk.
Would Thomas Indiano please come forward? Also, county executive Adam J. Bello, President Yuvresha Roman, legislators Michael Udelson and Steve Brew.
The Monroe County Legislature and office of the county executive recognized Thomas Indiano. Whereas Tom Indiano has dedicated his life to serving the Rochester area through his passion for music, education, and community service. He earned a bachelor of music education from the Eastman School of Music and a master's in education from Natsworth College, establishing a strong foundation for his lifelong dedication to music and teaching. Tom has shared his love of music with students for over forty years, spending thirty-six of those years at Pittsford-Sutherland High School, where he instructed wind ensemble, concert band, jazz ensemble, instrumental lessons, and music theory, leaving a lasting impact on countless young musicians. His leadership extended beyond the classroom as a longtime director of the Webster Village Band, which he led for nineteen years, conducting with his well-known baton and affectionately named Mr. Sticky. And whereas Tom's easygoing demeanor and ability to bring people together through music have earned him admiration and respect, as he made rehearsals both fun and enriching for his students and fellow musicians. He was recognized for his outstanding contributions to music education with the prestigious Rochester Philharmonic Orchestra Outstanding Instrumental Music Educator Award. His service to the community extends far beyond music, as he has been a volunteer firefighter since nineteen seventy-nine, starting with the East Rochester Volunteer Fire Department before joining the Webster Fire Department, where he rose to the rank of chief and continues to serve as a firefighter in the West Webster Fire District. Thomas further demonstrated his commitment to public safety by serving on the Consolidation Committee of the Northeast Joint Fire District from two thousand and three to two thousand and five, and as Monroe County Deputy Fire Coordinator for Battalion One. And whereas he played a vital role in community events, including serving as the longtime chairman of the Webster Electric Lights Christmas Holiday Party and chairing the Parade of Lights, helping to strengthen the spirit of the Village of Webster and the greater Monroe County community. Tom has also served in leadership roles on the Monroe County Fire Advisory Board, including as vice chairman and chairman, providing guidance and expertise to enhance fire safety across the county. And whereas Tom Indiano's lifelong commitment to music, education, firefighting, and community service has enriched the lives of so many, and his impact will continue to be felt for generations to come. Now, therefore, we, Monroe County Executive Adam J. Bello, Monroe County Legislature President Yuvresha Roman, Majority Leader Michael Udelson, Republican Leader Steve Brew, and the members of the Monroe County Legislature do hereby proclaim April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, to be a time to recognize Thomas Indiano.
It's quite a team. I can't do this alone, and, and I want to thank everybody that, that's assisted me and, and Chief Morehouse and Tim Henry and everybody. It's just, it's quite an honor. Thank you.
Would Almeda Whitus and Kelly Cheeto please come forward? Also, county executive Adam J. Bello, President Yuvresha Roman, and legislator Carolyn Delvaki Hoffman.
I'm going to read a proclamation about you. Is that okay?
That's fine. Thank you.
The Monroe County Legislature recognizes Almeda Whitus. Whereas it is the sense of the legislature to honor and celebrate the people and organizations which make Monroe County a better place to live. And whereas attendant to such concern, the legislature is justly proud to honor Almeda Whitus for her extraordinary contributions to our community. Whereas Almeda, an accomplished storyteller, poet, writer, artist, and educator, has devoted her life and career to exploring and celebrating the cultural connections which unite people from all walks of life. Almeda's work spans five continents, combining diverse stories and traditions with history, movement, dance, film, and the visual arts. As a former performing arts educator and master teaching artist, Almeda has impacted countless generations of young people, inspiring and mentoring them through workshops and classes blending storytelling, philosophy, and cultural history. Almeda's work has cultivated critical thinking skills, creativity, and compassion in students around the world, empowering them to become culturally aware and civically engaged members of their communities. In nineteen ninety-three, Almeda founded Shanticleer Productions, a consulting company dedicated to arts and education, which helped to bring her transformative work to communities across the globe. As a published author, Almeda's poetry has been featured in numerous additions of Le Man, Hussey?
Le Musique. It's French.
You heard her, right? And she is a proud member of Just Poems. Almeda's literary work continues to inspire, and her insights into the power of storytelling showcase her commitment to building a common ground, which transcends divisions, making her work both deeply personal and universally relevant. Almeda Whitus tireless contributions as an educator, artist, and bridge builder continue to enrich the lives of all who have had the privilege of experiencing her work. Her unwavering commitment to inclusivity, compassion, and cultural awareness have made a profound and lasting impact on our community and beyond, inspiring future generations to come. Now, therefore, let it be known, we, Adam J. Bello, Monroe County Executive, Yuvresha Roman, President, and myself, do hereby honor Almeda Whitus on this eighth day of April, twenty twenty-five. Thank you so much for everything you've done for our community.
Thank you. Oh, you are alive out there. Oh, thank you so much, ma'am. I'm a hugger. It was hard during, during COVID. Thank you all so very much. Um, this is something that, um, I would never have expected to be getting when I'm almost eighty years old and I, I am appreciative of all of the people in our greater Rochester community who have invited me into their schools and their homes and their places of worship and their businesses and their institutions for, to experience the magic of storytelling. And, um, I do want to give honor to my cousin. I think she's back there taking a film and is Dr. Miranda Mims. And she's the co-founder of Nomadic Archivist Project. And we have a Mellon Foundation grant where I will be collecting Rochester resident stories. So please, I'm on whatever that thing is YouTube. There's lots of emails and all that other good stuff, but please, if you have a family story and artifacts and memorabilia that you want archived for history, I will be the hub administrator. Uh, NAPS has three, uh, locations, New York City, Washington DC, and Rock City. Thank you. I never say goodbye. I say peace.
Would members of urban suburban please come forward? Also, county executive Adam J. Bello, legislators Michael Udelson, Steve Brew, and President Yuvresha Roman.
The Monroe County Legislature recognizes the Urban Suburban Inter-District Transfer Program. Whereas it is the sense of the legislature to honor and celebrate the people and organizations which make Monroe County a better place to live. And whereas attendant to such concern, the legislature is justly proud to honor the Urban Suburban Inter-District Transfer Program for its sixty years of dedication to fostering inclusivity, breaking down barriers, and providing students with the opportunity to thrive in diverse and supportive educational environments. And whereas the Urban Suburban Program began in nineteen sixty-five with West Ronda, West Ronda Quay School District's pioneering efforts to address racial imbalances in schools, welcoming twenty-four students and becoming the first voluntary desegregation program in the United States. And whereas the program has since grown to include fourteen suburban districts, currently enrolling over nine hundred students and proudly supporting its largest graduating class of ninety-four seniors this spring. And whereas the purpose of the Urban Suburban Program is to voluntarily decrease racial, racial isolation, deconcentrate poverty, and enhance educational opportunities for students in the Rochester City School District and the suburban districts of Monroe County, fostering an inclusive and equitable environment for all. And whereas the legacy of the Urban Suburban Program is exemplified through the remarkable achievements of its alumni, who have built successful careers and have become leaders in their respective fields, demonstrating the transformative power of the program in shaping their futures. And whereas this year marks a monumental milestone for the Urban Suburban Program, as they celebrate their diamond anniversary, sixty years of dedication to fostering racial equity and educational opportunity, and thousands of students whose lives have been transformed by the program's inclusive mission. And whereas the ongoing success of the Urban Suburban Program is a testament to the unwavering commitment of its staff, students, families, and community partners, whose collective efforts continue to illuminate pathways to academic excellence, social justice, and community unity for students across our county. Now, therefore, let it be known that we, Adam J. Bello, Monroe County Executive, Yuvresha Roman, President, Michael Udelson, Majority Leader, Steve Brew, Republican Leader, and the members of the Monroe County Legislature do hereby honor the Urban Suburban Program for its sixtieth anniversary on this eighth day of April, twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, everyone. Come on over, team. It is, it is certainly an honor, and we are so humbled. And thank you for this special recognition on behalf of Monroe One Bosse's Urban Suburban Inter-District Transfer Program. Thank you.
Would members of the Greece American Legion please come forward? Also, President Yuvresha Roman, legislators Steve Brew, Sean McCabe, Kirk Morris, and Tom Sinclair.
Whereas American Legion posts have stood as patriotic veteran organizations since their inception by Congress in nineteen nineteen. Focusing on service to veterans, service members, and communities, the Legion has become one of the most influential nonprofit groups in the United States. And whereas the Greece American Legion Post four hundred and sixty-eight has provided over a hundred years of service to our community, helping to influence social change and winning benefits for veterans, while producing many important programs for veterans, children, and youth. And whereas for the past fourteen years, Greece American Legion Post four hundred and sixty-eight has held the annual Warrior Benefit Concert, supporting our veterans and active-duty military members through fundraising complete with a full day of live music and fun, while connecting veterans with important services and programs. And whereas Monroe County is proud to have such outstanding veteran residents, members of our community have benefited immensely from the presence and work of the Greece American Legion Post four hundred and sixty-eight. The work done by their charters members have helped improve the lives of veterans throughout the area, and we are extremely grateful for their service. Now, therefore, we, Yuvresha Roman, President, Steve Brew, Republican Leader, Sean McCabe, Legislature District Six, Kirk Morris, Legislature District Seven, and Tom Sinclair, Legislature District Nineteen, on behalf of the entire Monroe County Legislature, do hereby congratulate and recognize American, Greece American Legion Post four hundred and sixty-eight in honor of their continued service to improve the lives of veterans throughout our community.
I'm Commander Dan Perna from the American Legion Post four sixty-eight. Glad to be here today. Nice to see all your faces out there. Thank you for the certificate of recognition. I want to let you know that it's just not us few who represent right now. We have a thousand members in that, in that post that are out there all the time doing what we do to try and do the best for veterans and all the other causes out there. So again, I want to thank you for recognition and have a good night.
Would Zane Kropman please come forward? Also, legislature, or President Yuvresha Roman, legislators Susan Hughes Smith, Paul Dondorfer, and Frank Chardy.
Whereas Zane Kropman has achieved the highest honor New York State High School Wrestling by being crowned the Division One State Champion in the one hundred and ninety-pound weight class, demonstrating not only exceptional athletic skill, but also remarkable resilience and determination in the face of adversity. And whereas despite his season being delayed due to injury, Zane was able to overcome this setback, returning with unwavering focus and tenacity. He quickly reestablished himself as a dominant force on the map. His undefeated record of eleven wins and zero losses is a testament to his relentless work ethic, mental toughness, and passion for the sport. And whereas Zane's path to the state title included earning, included earning the Class A One sectional championship and claiming the Section Five State Qualifier Championship by pinfall, showcasing his technical ability and unmatched competitive drive. At the New York State Wrestling Championships, Zane delivered an extraordinary performance culminating in a commanding fourteen-to-five major decision victory in the final match, providing a dominant display that secured his place as the top wrestler in the state at one hundred and ninety pounds. And whereas achieving a state championship as a sophomore is an exceptional accomplishment that speaks volumes not only about Zane's athletic talent, but also about his dedication to his training, his ability to overcome obstacles, and the strong support system of coaches, teammates, family, and mentors who have helped guide him along the way. Now, therefore, we, Yuvresha Roman, President, Paul Dondorfer, Legislature District Nine, Susan Hughes Smith, Legislature District Fourteen, and Frank Chardy, Legislature District Fifteen, on behalf of Monroe County, do hereby recognize and honor Zane Kropman for winning the two thousand and twenty-five Division One one hundred and ninety-pound wrestling New York State Championship.
Upon the presentation of formal committee report. There are no formal committee reports scheduled for this evening. We'll now hold the public forums. Thank you to everyone who has signed up for public forum. We ask that everyone maintain the forum. We ask that everyone maintain the forum during this time. Will not tolerate any disruption during this meeting from the gallery. A warning will be issued before a deputy will be asked to remove you from the gallery. We have several people registered to address legislature. Mr. Clark.
If you require assistance, a deputy is available to assist you in approaching the lectern. I will call three people forward at one time. Each speaker will have two minutes in which to address the legislature. Please do not bring up any signs or props. Do not single out any legislator. Please conclude when the buzzer sounds. Thank you for your cooperation. The first three speakers are Terrence Schnur, Carolyn Wormuth, and Dr. Candace Lucas.
I almost didn't come tonight. I'm really only here because I said I would be. There is far too much wrong in our world, our union, our state, and our community, for me to want to exert effort crying out into the void by attempting to wax eloquent about the absurdity of the fact that those whom you almost always quite justly honor with proclamations no longer come forward as they did for fifty-seven years, but now come in, about how that gives the sense of the ruled being honored by the rulers rather than community members being honored by their neighbors through their representatives, about how that is part of an ongoing and intensifying effort by the thirty-three Senate citizens whom we have chosen to temporarily act in our behalf to make those in the gallery who come to petition or observe you feel more like intruders than citizens exorcising their constitutional and statutory rights, about how that contributes to the sense of alienation of the public from their servants and from one another that is at the heart of so much that is wrong in our society. I do not know whether my future attempts to more constructively speak the truth as God gives me to see it will bring me back to this podium in coming months, but whether it does or not, I hope you will all continue to attempt to make our society whole again. Thank you, and have a good night.
Hello. My name is Carolyn Wormuth, and I want to talk about the attempts by the current administration to erase our history, or it only be more easily repeated. Sorry, it's my first time doing this, I'm nervous. Thank you. So, an executive order demanded that minority-related history removed from the Smithsonian Museum, and four hundred books related to DI have been removed from the Naval Library after command by Pete Hexif. This includes slavery, women's rights, and then LGBTQ struggles. The history of minorities struggling through oppression is the history of the United States. We cannot pretend it happened because it's uncomfortable to look at. A billionaire who ran in this administration with the Nazi salute is playing a key role in our government. I'm pleading with you not only protect our museums and historical sites, not only in Rochester, but the United States, but also stop the rhyming of history like the current administration is doing over and over and over again. I want to end with saying some names and asking a question. Muhammad Khalil, Ramisi, Osterk, Louisian Dixon, Abrego Garcia. At this point, who will be next?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Candace Lucas. Since the results of the two thousand twenty-four election were announced, a small group of community members and advocates known as the Rock Community Table have been meeting weekly to discuss the challenges our community is facing as a result of federal policy directives and identify ways to mitigate the harm those directives are causing your constituents. These changes are affecting diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, education, health, human services, immigration, policing, environmental justice, LGBTQ-plus rights, women's rights, and a host of other social justice issues. And we want to know what you are doing to safeguard your community from further harm. So I have a few questions. Given the executive orders eliminating diversity, equity, and inclusion from government-funded programs, many of our local agencies have to sign contracts asserting they will not provide their employees with all of the tools and resources they need to succeed in their workplace. What steps are you taking to make sure Monroe County continues to be a diverse, inclusive, equitable, and welcoming community where all your residents have what they need to be thriving members of this county? Additionally, while New York is a sanctuary state and Rochester is a sanctuary city, Monroe County does not have such a designation. Most immigrants in our community are law-abiding individuals who want an opportunity to live the American dream, just like everyone else. They are hard-working, tax-paying contributors to our economy. They are not violent criminals or gang members. They are our neighbors. What are you doing to protect the human and civil rights of all immigrants, including Black immigrants who have been invisibilized during this process? Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Sarge Mitchell, Richard Link, and Irene Sanchez.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sarge Mitchell from Combat News. We're here again because we still don't have a bus stop at the local VA. Veterans didn't calculate the cost of freedom or the number of lives they were willing to risk to protect our nation. They answered the call without hesitation, and it's now our absolute duty to ensure their access to vital health care is seamless and unwavering. It's time to stop focusing on RTS's spreadsheets and start focusing on service. Whether it's one veteran or whether it's a hundred, the fact remains, their dedication to our nation deserves tangible support, and that includes a fundamental right to easily access vital health care here in Monroe County. What I'm asking tonight is for y'all to help me. We need to cut through the red tape to ensure a bus stop at the VA clinic becomes a reality because every veteran deserves a convenient access to the care they earned. Our service was unconditional. The support from you all, I hope, would be equally so. We are done being bamboozled. We want to stop what's happening, and we want to get this RTS bus stop back where it was. A bus stop is something that we need. It's something that we basked for before. We don't understand why we're concerned about numbers. Point nine veterans a day during a pandemic, and that's the numbers RTS uses. If that's acceptable, then that's on you guys. But remember, we'll hold everybody accountable because vets vote. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Richard Link. I'm a local immigration lawyer. I have two areas of concern. The first is the Monroe County Sheriff's Office and their coordination with ICE and CBP. I think we need some more clarity about exactly how they're coordinating. I know on their public-facing websites, they will say that they don't enforce immigration law. That's great because they can't. But when they make a stop, like a traffic stop, for example, is it the policy, is it forbidden to then contact ICE or CBP if they suspect somebody is here illegally? If that's happening, I find that disturbing. The second thing is the federal government is, in the budget proposals, is proposing to spend a lot more money on ICE detainment facilities and enforcement activities. And I would hope that Monroe County is not going to allow the construction of any new ICE detainment facilities in our county. There's two reasons for this. Why I'm concerned is because I don't think it's smart immigration policy to be deporting the immigrants that are here in our county. People may say, well, they're here illegally. Well, the solution to that is legalize them rather than trying to deport them. It's really bad economically to get rid of the immigrants in our county regardless of their immigration status. And also, I have not heard anything from the federal level about why this is good policy to suddenly try to deport everybody who's here illegally. All I can surmise is that it's due to xenophobia and possibly racism. So I think as a moral imperative, we should not be doing anything to support that. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Irene Sanchez. I'm a Monroe County resident, an advocate for immigrant rights, and the executive director of the Western New York Coalition of Fund Workers Training Agencies. I'm here tonight to say what should be obvious. Immigrants are essential to our economy, to our communities. From farms to hospitals, from construction to classrooms, immigrants help to build and sustain this county. But instead of protection, many face fear, discrimination, and policies that strip away their dignity. We ask you, our elected officials, to act. Immigrants, no matter their status, are protected under our constitution. The Fifth Amendment grants them the right to remain silent. The Fourth Amendment protects them against unreasonable searches and seizures, and the right to leave freely from discrimination. Yet, just yesterday, during a No Your Rights workshop, a woman told me how her husband, the father of two U.S. citizens, was pulled over while driving simply from being Latino. He asserted his right to remain silent, but his rights were ignored. This is happening too often, and the stories are way too long for me to share in one night. Families are detained without access to legal counsel, especially in Border Patrol in Arundacoye, leaving mixed statuses families at constant risk of family separation. This is not unjust, this is inhumane. Let's be clear, immigrants are vital to our economy. In two thousand twenty, immigrants added one point three billion to the Monroe County economy, held over three thousand four hundred immigrants' own businesses, paying six hundred thirty-seven million in taxes, and spending one point four billion locally. So I ask, what will happen if these families leave? Who will fill these jobs? How many businesses will close? How much higher prices you're willing to pay? That's why I urge you to support the Immigrant Justice Initiative, a holistic approach providing emergency family preparedness, legal assistance, and rapid response to communities, and our education in our neighbors. Together, we can build a system that is rooted in dignity, justice, and care because immigrant families thrive, Monroe County thrive. Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Bonita Archer, Diego Grisales, and Julie Clayton. Bonita.
Let's see. Kind of short. Hi, everyone. My name is Bonita Archer. But unlike my name, I am not of Spanish descent. I'm descended from all the white people in Europe. I'd like to first thank our Monroe County legislators for the work they do for the community. Thank you. Too close. Set the way. Okay. I lived here in the greater Rochester area my whole life, and this is my first time speaking to you. My ancestors were immigrants. They sailed on the Mayflower, founded Quaker towns in Pennsylvania in the seventeen hundreds, and farmed in New York's southern tier. On one side were academics, and on the other, farmers. They had one thing in common, the desire to live a good life. As a youngster, I've worked alongside migrant farm workers. They were able to harvest apples faster than me any day. Our local farms depend on migrant workers, their expertise and manpower. As a librarian in our city's academic hospital, I worked with brilliant doctors and dentists in training here on visas. Many end up staying here to raise families. They treat our sickest and keep us well. They all share the dream of a good life, like my ancestors, like me. I want to ask you, what kind of a life will we support for our immigrants here in Rochester? One where their basic human rights are nonexistent? One where a misunderstanding leads to their trauma, their imprisonment, their disappearance from society? A small town on Lake Ontario was traumatized this month when a woman and her children were suddenly taken by ICE and sent to a Texas facility. Imagine, middle-school kids suddenly missing classmates, asking where they went. Local officials couldn't locate them for days. This is a crucial time to stand up for immigrants and their rights. Immigrants deserve access to legal counsel, right to due process, and freedom from fear of unjust deportation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Clayton, and I live in the town of Brighton. The clause in the Fifth Amendment to the United States Constitution provides, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." It is also in the Twenty-Fourth Amendment. And this does say person, not citizen. In a living, breathing, a living, breathing person, a human being, we cannot assume that people are criminals and take them away from their families and lives. Since the election of Donald J. Trump, our precious Constitution has been trampled in and not being followed in many ways. But I am just going to address this clause in particular. It was entered into our Constitution because our forefathers wanted to protect the freedom of human beings anywhere within the bounds of our country, regarding the country as important and precious, as well as human beings within it as important and precious. I come here this evening to implore our law enforcement of Monroe County to respect and obey our Constitution. The police and sheriffs have a difficult job. That is not the question. It's not in question. But the enforcement of our laws must be done objectively and within the confines of our Constitution, the law of our land. There are three human beings in Moragas who have been taken away from Rochester and sent to Batavia with no due process. I realize that that event occurred with the assistance of the Rochester Police Department, but the Monroe County sheriffs need to also learn from that mistake. Those people are suffering, and that is wrong and unnecessary. We need to right that wrong. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diego Grisales. I am a Colombian-born and raised citizen. I'm also a United States citizen now, so I'm not going to talk about law because you probably are very well-known on it. So, excuse me. I work as a nurse practitioner since two thousand and twelve. I worked in migrant health initially, and I saw a lot of migrants and also a lot of people from this country, that is mine now, struggle a lot, okay? But not as much as they have been struggling in the But not as much as they have been struggling in the last three months of this year, okay? People are afraid of coming to be seen. People don't want to set foot in our clinic. We are trying to bring them back, because obviously, we are dealing with chronic illnesses, illnesses that can be transmissible, you know? So we have some issues with access to medications even just because people were afraid of coming to our clinic to get their medications. People were afraid to come and face maybe ICE officers coming after them, you know? So my position here today is basically to how you think about how we're going to be doing, what are we going to be doing to help these individuals come and get care without being afraid, being anxious, and not having to watch themselves, to watch their backs, and being afraid of being sent back home. Some people, even our Caucasian or American-born citizens, are questioning, "Am I going to be having access of care?" Just because part of our funds come from the federal government. So again, it's a question of what can we do to make these people feel safe and come to our clinics, to our office providers, and get this care that they need and deserve? Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Cassandra Bocanegra, Alan Blair, and Sanjay Hiranjani.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cassandra Bocanegra. I am a lifelong resident of Rochester since 1999, when my family immigrated here. I'm also an advocate who has been doing immigration justice work since I was 14 years old. The reason that I started at such a young age was because even back then, the injustices that the immigrant community within Rochester and throughout the Monroe County area have faced were tremendous. We are currently in a time when people are being targeted not because of anything other than the color of their skin or the accent in their voice, and that is unacceptable. Our communities have long been a part of the Rochester network, and I don't want to talk about what immigrants do for our communities, because they do a lot. And our values should not be based on our economic support, or how much we contribute economically, or whether or not we're criminals. Our values should be intrinsic on the fact that we're humans, and that we bleed, we cry, and we work hard for our families. I want to talk a little bit about some of the work that I do. I work for the New York Immigration Coalition as an advocate and as the representative for the Finger Lakes region, and I want to talk about what you all can do. We've talked about what we need to do, but I want to turn it on everyone in this room and talk about what you all can do. You have the power to speak up, to call on the injustices that we see every day. You've been elected by the community. You've been charged with the power to represent us at the county level. You have the power to sign on to letters of support, to speak up to the senators and assembly members that you see every day, and to speak up about the injustices that are happening in your backyard. And quite frankly, I'm not hearing enough of that from y'all. I will finish this by saying, I've handed some one-pagers about two pieces of legislation that we're working on at the state level. I've included my email address at the top to give you all the opportunity to reach out and ask how you can sign on and how you can show support by filling out a Google form. That is the least that I'm asking of you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Alan Blair here from Color Brighton Green to tell you about the much more local issue of why we need more food waste composting capacity here in Monroe County. The state Food Donation and Food Scraps Recycling Law requires any business or institution generating more than two tons of food scraps per week to recycle them if there's an organics recycler within 25 miles. The 16 qualifying entities in the county together generate over 2,000 tons of food scraps per year. Keeping it out of our landfills would save big money and hundreds of tons of carbon pollution. But much of that food waste is not getting recycled because the facilities we have now can't handle the food waste the county produces. We need food scraps recycling/composting centers all over the county to deal with residential as well as commercial food waste. That means hundreds of tons less carbon pollution and tons of compost to improve both public and residential landscapes. We thank you, our legislators, for the County Climate Action Plan, which includes food scraps recycling as well as the $1 million appropriated to continue climate action initiatives. We also thank you for the $5,000 matching grants to local schools to implement food waste diversion projects, although it would have been better to time the application period in late fall rather than early spring when school budgets are mostly finalized. So let's put the climate plan into action. Let's save the cost of hauling all that food waste to the landfill or on a 70-mile round trip to Livingston County. Let's keep those hundreds of tons of carbon pollution out of the atmosphere. Let's hire that sustainability engineer and create a team whose director is truly empowered to prioritize systems change. Then we can really get this done. People, you've already appropriated the money. As I've said in this body several times now, we're past the time of feasibility studies.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. My name is Sanjay Hiranjani, and I come before you not just as a proud resident of Monroe County, but as someone who once lived in the shadows as an undocumented immigrant. It was the executive orders of President Ronald Reagan and George H.W. Bush that allowed me and millions of others to step into the light. That act of compassion and courage changed my life, and it gave me the chance to get an education, to contribute to this country, and to raise a family, some of whom are back there, right here in Monroe County. Over the past decades, I've invested my life in this community. At first as a corporate executive, and now as a startup investor, I've created hundreds of local jobs, probably in each of your districts. I have contributed to the arts, supported education, and worked alongside many of you to strengthen the very institutions that make this county vibrant and welcoming. I'm privileged to work among such dedicated leaders, and I'm told I can't name any of you, as I did in my speech. So if I inadvertently do it, it wasn't intentional, but I serve on the Airport Authority with a couple of you. I've spent time at weddings of dear friends with some of you. He's smiling in the back there, knows who I'm talking about. Several of you have helped me and several of my friends in their businesses and advocating for them in your districts. And, you know, I'm a proud Cornelian, like at least one other of you here. I'm also a great friend of law enforcement. You can ask, I think I can name a non-legislator. Director Tantalo is here. Ask anybody in the Brighton Police Department. The community that gave me grace and opportunity when I needed it most, I ask it today that we extend that same compassion to others who now find themselves vulnerable in a very treacherous environment. Right now, ICE is actively targeting individuals in our community, including many Green Card holders who've been living here peaceably for decades. These are our neighbors. These are not threats. They are people, people like I once was, doing their best to build a better life and give back the place they now call home. Thank you for your time and for all you do for your service to this county now and in the future. Thank you very much.
Our next three speakers are Paul Farsella, Patty Singer, and Librada Paez.
I strongly encourage all here to stop supporting the Roman Catholic Church. Stop attending their events and masses, and tell your friends to do the same. I strongly encourage staff at this meeting to stop letting Roman Catholic priests speak here at your meetings. Here is why: Catholic priests have abused kids, and the local Catholic diocese has been very unwilling to give abuse victims compensation they deserve. Corruption in the Catholic Church is now taking other forms than that. I have seen priests lie. I have seen antisemitism in the Catholic Church, and Catholic Charities offices in downtown Rochester often treat the needy very unfairly. Where is the God of the Catholic Church? It is up to citizens to stop the badness of the Catholic Church. The Lord is too afraid or unwilling to help, if he exists. This is the same God who was worried and scared about a useless structure man built, found in the Book of Genesis, that structure being the Tower of Babel.
Good evening. When I started in journalism, I received two small books. One was "Elements of Style," the other combined "The Declaration of Independence" and "The Constitution of the United States of America." Both of these slim volumes are indispensable to anyone who seeks to clearly express matters of great importance, but one of them is under siege, and it's not strung in white. This book holds the rules for a government that gets its legitimacy from the people and exists to serve the people. The Constitution sets out the rule of law. Some people say democracy is the rule of the majority, but that becomes the rule of tyranny when the rules are ignored, broken, flouted, and laughed at. Rules that say Congress regulates commerce with foreign countries. Rules that allow for a free press, freedom to assemble, and freedom to do what we're doing right now, petitioning the government for redress of our grievances. Rules requiring probable cause research. Rules that determine citizenship. Rules that allow persons of age to vote regardless of their sex. Rules that set out the number of times one person can be president. Rules that give Congress and the judiciary equal importance with the executive in our government and say those rules cannot be overruled on a whim. Members of the legislature, you took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. You are required to live up to that oath and protect this document and our democracy, whether that assault comes from 39 West Main Street or 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue. Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Librada Paz again. I'm here actually just to talk a little bit about more of, I guess, the experience of how farmworkers are hard-working people, and I guess just to educate you a little bit, because it's really hard. A lot of, you know, farmworkers have been so isolated, and then people hasn't really been accountable, so that's why it's important for all of you to know how important it is that farm labor work, you know? Because, I mean, a lot of people had to work so hard and then so isolated and then be so discriminated. And so I guess what I'm here to say is that we had to really protect the workers, because right now, they're about to get ready and go and work on the field, and then they're going to start really working so hard, you know, working on the land, and then all the way to the fall, and then get the crops ready, and then pick them up, you know? So it's quite a lot of work. And the winter time, they had to work and then do all the harvesting that they pick to work inside, packaging, and all those things. So there's a lot of discrimination around, because what we want is that police should not be working with the immigration, because for anything that they see, and they see a face that looks like, you know, Hispanic or, you know, like Mexican color, because mostly what they always define is that Mexicans are here, and then they are criminals or lazy people that are taking over the jobs and then aiding the government, you know, economic and all those things. But it's not true, because a lot of the workers that are working out there are very hard-working people, and they don't even have a document. So those people who don't even have a document, they can't even have access to anything at all. So for that reason, it is very important to know that people are here to really work, and they're so afraid of being in the public right now, the thing that's going on a lot right now, as you all know. And people don't keep, people, I'm sorry, people even quit the job because they're so afraid of going and do shopping or even work. So for that, I really encourage that police should not be working together with immigration. Thank you so much.
Our next three speakers are Leonte Paul, Maria Garcia, and Horatio Martinez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leonte Paul, and I'm a registered professional nurse and have been one for the past 20 years in the greater Rochester area, and I'm in notes just died. My concerns with the immigrants and their rights is healthcare and mental health. Already, a lot of them are doing a job that is very hard physically, emotionally, and psychologically, and to have the other piece of now worried about being picked up by doing nothing at all is a lot. And as a medical professional, I'm just asking that we look at them as humans, and that we don't ignore their basic human rights, such as access to medical care, mental, physical, emotional well-being. It's taxing on their families, it's taxing on them as adults trying to provide, and it'll be taxing on our community as a whole. And, sorry, my notes are all gone. And that's just my concern I'm going to share with you, because I'm going to go, because my time is probably up, right? It will be. So that's all I'm asking for, that we keep in mind that these are human beings that need access to basic human rights, such as mental health and physical health. And as you are going through your rules and making your changes, please consider these people as humans first, migrants, whatever, and whatever other title you want to put second. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maria Garcia, and I am a proud resident of Rochester, New Rochester. I'm also the program director at the Western New York Coalition. I'm not going to sit here and revisit the countless reasons why we must support our immigrant community. Many have already established that here presently earlier this afternoon. Those reasons are all well-known. Instead, I want to remind you of something just so simple yet so profound: we are all descendants of immigrants. Immigration is the movement of people seeking better opportunities, safety, a new life in a different land. It's a force that has shaped not only this nation, but the very fabric of our community. Generations of my immigrants have woven together in our cities, our families, our traditions, each contributing their culture and knowledge and work ethic. They've helped us build our infrastructures, our schools, our roads, and our businesses. But these are the same people that live in the shadows, and there's no paper trail to tell their story. They are the unsung heroes and the ghostwriters of America's history. And this is where history often takes the turn and forgets them. So today, I'll ask you to stand for immigrants. I'm going to use Alexander Hamilton's own words, and when we fail to stand for something, what do you fall for? So the answer is clear: our shared values, our progress, and our future. Immigrants do more than just fill jobs. They enrich our communities, strengthen our economy, and make us just better people. If we fail to support them, we risk losing the very spirit and beacon of what the city of Rochester is meant to be. Supporting immigrants can be as simple as reminding them of their rights. I'm not asking you to give them money. I'm asking you to support them. So reminding them that they have the right to not answer any questions if you see them with ICE, saying they have the right to seek legal counsel before seeking any or signing any paperwork, and the right to not have to be searched. These are just basic conversations you can have with your colleagues and constituents. As someone who works closely with immigrants every day, I can tell you this: our immigrant community is not a problem. Our immigrant community is not a problem to be solved, it's a strength to be celebrated. Thank you.
Good evening. Esteemed legislators, President Romano, County Executive fellow, Seita Vázquez. I am a 57-year Monroe County resident. In 1968, I arrived here with my family and celebrated my 10th year on the planet here. I may get emotional. I'm an immigrant. I was asked to come up and speak on behalf of the immigrant experience. Immigration is a tragedy. Anybody who has ever had to leave their home and everything they knew to run through their life is in the midst of a tragedy. I was fortunate. I came here legally because I had a family member here, and I had a government that understood that if you give people a chance, they will make the best of it. The statistics prove that. We have a problem in America. We don't know what immigration really is, what it means to people, what it means to want to be an American. So I thought I'd present myself and show you that a person can live, learn to speak English before there was ESOL, have a broadcasting career which required perfect diction. A person can do that if given the opportunity. Yet I see us doing the opposite today. Ladies and gentlemen, I and the other speakers call upon you to consider the humanity of every person before us. My name is Horacio Martinez. I thank you for listening to me tonight.
Our next public forum speaker is Kelly Cheadle.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Cheadle. To exist without a target on your back is a luxury, and our immigrant neighbors do not have that privilege. Our brown and black neighbors do not have that privilege. Our disabled, our queer, our unhoused, our women do not have that privilege. Our union siblings, our artists, our outspoken neighbors do not have that privilege. So when I hear that some of our representatives are afraid to stand up for their constituents because they fear that it might place a target on their backs, it tells me that you are not only out of touch with the people that you are meant to serve, you're failing to represent the best interests because of your self-interest. Obedience in advance does not prevent harm. It clears the path for it. When you choose silence, you are not protecting the community. You are hiding behind the bodies of immigrant children that you are willing to sacrifice. If the federal government can scoop anyone up off the street, what will you do when they come for you when there is no one left to stand behind? Obedience in advance does not prevent harm, it clears the path for it. If these are the times that try men's souls, look to the women if you must, but we need you to choose courage over comfort. Our lives depend on it. Thank you.
This concludes the public forum.
We'll now proceed with the consideration of motions, resolutions, and notices. Will the clerk read the next item on the agenda? Yes, Legislature Ullson.
We consider the agenda as a whole with the exceptions of items number 23, 25, 32, and then the MOUs numbers 33 through 43, and also number 45.
Motion to the agenda by, Ullson seconded by, Senator Brew. Are, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, we will now move to item 23.
Item number 23, referral 25-0081, accepting grant from New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services for Criminal Justice Discovery Reform Funding for District Attorney's Office and Department of Public Safety Office of Probation and Community Corrections.
Second, moved by Legislature Long, second by Legislature McCucci and Vasquez Timmons. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, oh, I apologize, yes, Legislature Bay.
Madam President, through you to the administration, thank you for providing us with the data. The request that we received today, the request was to ascertain the number of cases that were dismissed due to the new discovery rules. And I appreciate the response because it makes clear that the data is not disaggregated, so we can't really tell from our tracking system. But if you, we look at the last item in the data, which is felony dismissals with reasons undetermined, we see that the number of dismissals has almost doubled between 2020 and 2023. And so my question this time is, do we have a sense of why we've had that many felony dismissals and why that trend?
On stop, Administrator for the District Attorney's Office. No, I don't have an answer to the trend.
I'm sorry I didn't stand up. I just was told I'm supposed to stand up. I apologize. Through you, Madam President, to the administration, the, the move, you know, the number was 71 and now it's 136. So we just don't have any even anecdotal sense of why we've had so many felony cases dismissed? Through you, Madam President.
Through the President, I was not prepared to answer that question tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to explain my vote. You know, one of the things that we want to be in this legislature is data rich as we can be. We have anecdotal evidence that the new discovery rules have been onerous upon our prosecutors, and that's why I asked for the data so that everyone here in this body could have it. And even with the data that's not disaggregated, that there seems to be no analysis. So my concern is that we're, the representation, not by the administration, but the general representation of the new discovery rules having a catastrophic effect on our prosecutors. And now this grant involves a couple million bucks to ameliorate the problem. It's just really frustrating that we don't actually have the data so we know what the problem is. Of course, I'll be voting to accept the data, and I hope that at a future meeting we can get a more specific factual evidence of the issue. Thank you.
Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item Carrie, next item.
Item number 25, referral 25-0083, authorizing dedication of roadway to clubhouse located in Durant Eastman Park, Jim Carlucci Drive.
By Legislature Bay, second by Legislature Barker. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item Carrie, next item.
Item number 32, referral 25-0093, increasing total project authorization for projects entitled Sheriff Scuba Truck Replacement and Sheriff's Body-Worn Camera and Taser Project.
By Legislature Long, second by Legislature McCucci. Is there any discussion? Legislature Barker.
Thank you. I rise to explain my vote. I am supportive of police body worn cameras. I think this is good policy, but I am not supportive of the process that was used to fund this equipment. So I want to put on the record that the purchase of these cameras is part of a larger $15.4 million tenured contract with a company called Axon for a broad range of surveillance equipment. That equipment includes drone technology, camera surveillance networks in communities, as well as artificial intelligence software to write police reports. And while this contract and this purchase may be in accordance with county policy and the county charter as currently written, it doesn't strike me as good government or common sense to do this large of an expenditure for something that has public policy implications. Next month even, we'll be voting on just allowing fixed license plate readers because that's what the state requires. So it really shows that this is important stuff that we should be involved in. The reason we didn't vote on the $15.4 million contract is because back in 1988, the state comptroller decided that this kind of purchase of software is a commodity. So it would be like buying a vehicle or rock salt, something that could be covered with the capital budget as we're seeing tonight. It's not considered a professional service, which we know we have to vote on $20,000 and above. I have shared with both caucuses, correspondence with the county attorney, as well as the contract with Axon for your review. This is not the last time you're going to hear from me about this. There are a number of ways that we could fix it, and I hope we can work on that together. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Item number 33, referral 25-0094, Young Citizens of Excellence, Willie W. Lightfoot, Youth Advocate of the Year, and Monroe County Youth Team Achievement Recommendations.
By Legislature Hassan, second by Legislature Vasquez. Is there any discussion?
I would like to thank all staffs, legislators, for the work they put into this. Arlene on our side, Reese Baker did a fabulous job, and you were side with us as well, so we truly appreciate that, and I just want to recognize the effort they put into this. We as much appreciated by, I believe, both caucuses. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item Carrie, item.
Item number 34, referral 25-0095, Home Rule Message for Assembly Bill Number A6298, entitled An Act to Authorize the County of Monroe to Offer an Optional 20-Year Retirement Plan to Christopher R. Fay, a captain employed by such county.
By. Don Northwood, Phil, and Don, and Florio. Or do you have a question? I can't find something else. Okay. Any discussion? Legislature Florio.
Through the administration, and this covers a whole series of matters of urgency that are similar. Can you just kind of clarify why we are seeing this again? I believe these are the same items that we've voted on previously and why this is there particularly.
Through you, the President. The legislature is correct. These are the same for deputies where we're seeking the approval to move them from the 25-year retirement plan to the 20-year plan as last year. The reason you are seeing these authorizations, requests for authorizations of Home Rule Messages, again, is because the New York State Legislature did not pass the bills last year. We, as I recall, I think sort of ran out of time at the end of session. So that also speaks to why these are matters of urgency. As soon as we got the bill numbers, the Assembly and Senate bill numbers, we wanted to get these before your honorable body so that we have adequate time to make sure they get passed down in Albany this year.
Any other discussion? Legislature Bay.
In the circumstance of our voting on these before and the fact that they're identical, I move to suspend the rules of the legislature and consider these matters of urgency that relate to the Home Rule Message as one.
Thank you. You don't need to suspend that.
My colleague Roy is just finding the rules for these specific seven remaining items, correct?
Thank you, yes. I'm referring to the, all the matters which we voted on that Legislature Florio correctly pointed out we've already voted on that involve Home Rule Message Assembly Bills.
Thank you.
So that's, so that's 34 through 41, is that, am I right? Those are, those are different ones. Are we, is that also 42 and 43 are different, correct? Right? Right? Okay. So it's 34 through 41 then?
Okay. Then you go on item 34 through 41.
As a whole.
You, any, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Item Carrie.
Who was the, who was the second on that?
We will on all items as whole, all, all in favor.
Although we already did that. Oh, okay. Sorry. Got it.
All in favor for. Aye. Any opposed? I, any opposed? Right, thank you. Now we go to item number.
All right. Item number forty-two referral twenty-five dash zero one zero three, Home Rule Message for Assembly Bill Number A five three eight zero entitled An Act to Amend the Tax Law in Relation to Extending the Authorization for the County of Monroe to Impose Certain Sales and Compensating Use Taxes.
By legislator, seconded by legislator McPhee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
Item number forty-three referral twenty-five dash zero one zero four, Home Rule Message for Senate Bill Number S six 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 nine entitled An Act to Amend the Tax Law in Relation to Extending the Authorization for the County of Monroe to Impose Certain Sales and Compensating Use Taxes.
By legislator, seconded by legislator McPhee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? I am carrying.
Item number forty-five referral twenty-five dash zero one three seven, authorizing, or authorize a contract with Delphi Drug and Alcohol Council for Substance Abuse and Addiction Treatment Screening and Referral Services.
By legislator passage seconded by legislator McPhee. Is there any discussion?
Just back through the President to the administration, the funding that was cut by the federal government of New York State and that specifically to Delphi Rise, correct?
Through the President, uh, yes, the, the funding flows from the federal government through New York State to Delphi Rise as one of the recipients of that funding. So, uh, that federal funding is the funding that was cut.
Is a follow-up to the President's administration. Do we know why the state chose to cut the funding for Delphi Rise?
Through the President, our understanding is the funding dried up because the state would no longer, uh, receive that funding because the federal government was no longer providing it.
Could the state have chosen through the President's administration, could the state have chosen to cut funds to a different program as opposed to Delphi Rise?
Through the President, I, I can't speak for the state of New York. That, that option was, was not made available to our understanding.
So basically, New York State made a decision and passed a buck to the county to come up with funding for this.
Through the President, there was an immediate funding gap that we were in a position to support using the opioid, uh, settlement dollars.
I have a couple more questions to feel in mind. According to the information provided to the media, press releases through the President's administration, it is alleged that this is necessary because the federal government sent twelve billion in federal grants allocated to state local health programs. However, it appears that these funds are now part of a multi-state lawsuit in which West District Judge Mary McCoy temporarily blocked these funds cuts on April third. Are these fund cuts the same? And if so, are these cuts truly not in effect yet or they're under litigation?
These subjects of.
The temporary restraining order.
Funds would only, uh, apply if, if that funding doesn't flow.
Now, my last question is just, is Delphi Rise the only provider of these twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven services in the county?
Through the President, I'm, I'm looking to our Office of Mental Health and the answer to that is yes.
So much.
President to the administration, so we're using a hundred thousand dollars of the opioid settlement money. Can you affirm how much money the county received in settlement dollars and how much remains?
Through the President, uh, so this referral specifically uses, there, there are two pots, uh, broadly speaking of opioid settlement dollars. Uh, there is, uh, money that, uh, the county recovered directly as a result of participation in litigation. And there is money that flowed directly to our office or flowed from the state to our Office of Mental Health. Uh, this referral uses, uh, some of the mental health specific money. Uh, and, uh, we can get you an exact figure, but we, uh, the, that total is around ten million dollars.
Through the President to the administration, is the, the total for the two pots of money, ten million dollars?
Through the President, no, I'm speaking specifically to the, uh, the ten million is the Office of Mental Health, uh, pot.
Through the President to the administration, it'd be great to get a total for what remains of both pots of money. I'm also curious, is there a spending plan for each pot of money?
Uh, through the President, we can get you, uh, the detailed, uh, financial breakdown. The, the breakdown of the broader pot is a little more complicated because as, as we've spoken about in this body before, uh, several of those settlements pay out over a very long period of time. Um, in terms of, uh, spending plan, that is something we are actively, uh, meeting with stakeholders on and expect to have more information soon.
One final question through the President to the administration. In terms of the spending plans, there's no board overseeing these funds. It would be the administration that comes up with that spending plan and comes to us if any contract, contracts are necessary like this one.
Through the President, that's correct.
Thank you. And it just explaining my vote, I think that makes a lot of sense to use the settlement funding in this way. So thank you.
I'll answer legislative later. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And our initial approach on this, this organization is benefits to the, to the community. And so I'm, I'm sure the rest of my caucus, uh, is happy to support, but just a couple of quick questions through you, ma'am, to the organization. Do you have, um, or if not, could we receive some basic information about Delphi Rising such as the, um, how much of their operating costs are, uh, general administrative, uh, and salary expenses? Uh, how many employees are on the payroll? Um, are their board members compensated, uh, and how much? Uh, and also some basic, uh, key performance indicators related to the number of people they serve, uh, in demographics, et cetera.
Through the President, we can get you that information.
Okay, thank you. And, um, one final follow-on question now through you, Madam President. Since this is, uh, bridge funding, uh, do we anticipate asking for continuing funding in twenty twenty-six?
Through the President, uh, that's an open question. So as, as, uh, I alluded to previously in response to Legislative McCabe's question, uh, there is litigation about this. Uh, obviously, you know, I'm, I'm not going to predict what's going to happen eight months from now. Um, so the, the, as, as you said, this is in fact bridge funding. Um, if there is the need next year, uh, we would look to follow appropriate procurement policies and come back to this honorable body.
I'm rising just to explain my vote. Um, you know, anytime we talk about financing, I kind of get excited and I just really want to take this opportunity to praise the administration for setting aside this money in a specific fund for a rainy day. Uh, in many cases in past years, what the county would do is take money and just spend it. This money was set aside for a rainy day and it's a very appropriate use of this money. I commend you for doing it and obviously I'll be voting for it. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, uh, what, what's the saying in politics? Everything's been said, but not everyone has said it. So go ahead. And I also want to thank the administration for their quick thinking on this. Um, this is a perfect use of the settlement money. Uh, this is a great way to fill in the gap that we may be seeing in federal funding and this will truly help people that may have fallen through the cracks. So thank you for this and I will be voting affirmatively and I hope my colleagues join me.
President, I move that we stand adjourned until six P M. on Tuesday, May thirteenth.